Chairman, if you want to start.
Okay, let's tell them the word. Roll call, please.
David Dahl.
Here.
Margaret Mauring.
Here.
Britten Sanders.
Here.
Greg Sutton. Colleen Murphy White. Justin Lehman.
Here.
All right, thank you, and we have some minutes for approval. Any discussion?
Move approval?
A second. Okay, we have moved to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Margaret Mauring.
Yes.
Britten Sanders.
Yes.
Justin Lehman.
Yes.
David Dahl.
Yes.
Thank you. Correspondence?
We don't have any.
No, name of business?
None as well.
New business.
All right. This is PC item 1121. This is a request indirectly from City Council, but through the Planning Department, for amendments to the Land Development Code specifically to amend Chapter 34, Section 34407, as it relates to outdoor restaurant areas, and to amend Article 4 definitions and Article 7 zoning districts. At the August 9th, 2021 briefing, City Council indicated support for amendments to Section 34407 of the Land Development Code in regards to outdoor restaurants and bars, specifically as it pertains to the ratio of outdoor restaurant seating and the seating calculations for restaurants to qualify for a special restaurant SRX alcoholic beverage licenses for COP. The outcome of this discussion on August 9th is summarized as below. Support for amendments to Section 34407 of the Land Development Code to increase ratios to allow for outdoor seating areas at restaurants citywide at a minimum of 50% ratio. Support for amendments to Section 34407 of the Land Development Code to allow outdoor restaurant seating areas citywide to count towards the 150C requirement to qualify for a 4COP SRX alcoholic beverage license. It was discussed that establishments with 4COP SRX and outdoor seating areas would potentially not be eligible for extended hours of operation permits in an effort to avoid the creation of additional RINOs, restaurants in name only. Additionally, 4COP SRX establishments, outdoor restaurant areas, would remain subject to Section 4-2E1B4, which requires 4COP SRX establishments to keep all tables and chairs upright and in place during all business hours or hours of operation, as per diagrams submitted to the city during the permit process. Consider amendments to Section 34407 of the Land Development Code to increase the ratio for allowable outdoor bar areas by perhaps a future date. Consider amendments to the proposed, consider amendments proposed in ordinance 2017-8093 that would allow outdoor restaurant areas approximately 200 square feet in size that do not serve alcohol to be permitted without having to receive conditional use approval and without having to provide additional parking. Support for review and consideration of amending any definitions related to restaurants and outdoor restaurant areas to ensure clarity and consistency with other parts of the city's code ordinances. City Council also expressed some concerns with potential consequences of the proposed changes discussed, such as the potential creation of new RINOs, impacts on parking, compatibility concerns with other uses, and unintended loopholes. Staff addressed these concerns with council. Staff took the council's requests and concerned into consideration and provided some proposed amendments to the Land Development Code as subsequent September 13th, 2021 briefing. Council confirmed their preferred amendments to the Land Development Code, and staff has prepared the attached draft ordinance for consideration by the Planning Commission prior to final review and consideration by City Council. The proposed suggestions for amendment to pregnant sections of the Land Development Code in relation to outdoor restaurant areas are summarized as follows. Update the definition of outdoor restaurant area to match the definition in Section 18 Noise Ordinance, sorry, Noise of the City Code ordinances. Allow outdoor restaurant areas of 250 square feet or less at establishments where alcohol is not served as a permitted use in certain commercial zoning districts where restaurants are permitted uses. Remove the parking requirement for outdoor restaurant areas that are less than 250 square feet. Amend the outdoor restaurant area allowable ratio from 25% of the indoor restaurant area to 50% of the indoor restaurant area. Allow outdoor restaurant seating areas to be used to compute the minimum seating requirements for qualifying for a 4COP SRX alcohol beverage license. Require a buffer around outdoor seating or bar areas that are immediately adjacent to residential uses. The proposed amendments are currently scheduled for an upcoming December 20th, 2021, City Council hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wobblit. Questions? Discussion?
I have a question in regards to the outdoor seating able to be used for the special license for alcohol. Is there a definition on what type of outdoor seating? Like if they put bar stools up next to a window that was open? Or I know some restaurants actually do here that has outdoor seating with an outdoor bar area. Does that count? Does it have, or do they have to have a table?
Um, if it's, well, if it's certainly food, it has to have the ability to have food eaten there, so a table. But a bar top can serve as well if, you know, seating is provided outside of the restaurant. It couldn't just be chairs lined up around the perimeter, though. It would have to be actual restaurant seating.
So is that, that's my question, is could they throw, could they put 10, 15 more seats outside and define that as seating? Or is there, does it actually have to be a surface, a table surface?
Right, so they have to provide a site plan that's reviewed both by us and the Fire Marshal for proper spacing and the number of seats. So in essence, they would have to show that there are tabletops there, and their outside seating would have to match approximately that layout. And then number of seats would be based on the occupancy and fire codes for evacuation. So they can't cram 100 seats into a space that can only accommodate 20. So it would be legitimate seating, and it would be of a number that would be calculated for safety.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about buffering, and maybe you can just kind of help me with, hi Heather. With the council's thinking, they were looking at fencing or at planters. Am I right in assuming that, that there would be pots that are acceptable as a buffer? And those pots should be, should have plants in them? Presumably the plants would be, it would be, at least be desirable that the plants be alive, things like that, you know, like.
Want me to add that?
Well, I am kind of wondering, was the council kind of going for a look or something that says Jack's Beach, that this is the way we do it in Jack's Beach? That's why, if you could maybe help me get into their heads on what they were thinking about?
Sure, so first Heather Ireland, Director of Planning Department, I apologize for being late, I was on a Zoom council briefing. So that's, well, still doing it, I just had to leave. So the buffering came up by Councilwoman Dumont as an idea, just a concept in general to provide some compatibility between outdoor seating and residential uses if they're immediately adjacent. Staff actually took that section from the central business district part of the Land Development Code, like almost verbatim, just to kind of maintain some consistency internally with the code. So it's really just kind of our stab at, was this what they had in mind for that buffering? So wanted to provide some options, like we do in other areas of code, where it could be a fence, it could be some landscaping, such as a hedge. We thought that, I thought that was kind of a nice component that we already had in the code, so just thought it would be good to repeat it here. But if you want me to add that the plants need to be alive, actually don't jack.
I actually, I mean, I do think that it makes sense to kind of, you know, continue that, that kind of theme. But yeah, I think frankly the plants should be required.
They should, I think it's kind of assumed that they're alive, but we could perhaps put some maintenance, things in there. It doesn't exist in that section of the code, but just in general, our landscape code does have some provisions in there about, you know, maintenance of trees and things like that.
So maybe they should go reference to that.
Yeah, we could, I'd have to look and see how we would.
That would just be a suggestion, but I like the idea.
So a question on that, using the outdoor seating in the calculations. So sometimes, I know at night, like, I know sometimes at night, like seating is moved in order to have standing room. Is that, is this like permanent seating, or is this?
This would be permanent seating, yes. Just like most outdoor seating areas now, especially restaurants. If there are 4COP in particular are required to maintain their seats in their locations during all hours of operation. So they're actually not supposed to move them to make, like you said, open it up and make that space available for standing.
Any further questions? Comments? Oh, what deep thinking is going on here? We already had the, I've got a couple of comments. We already have the compatibility work came up, Ms. Aron brought it up right away. And that's really what this is about. This is about compatibility use, especially where it concerns liquor sales outside at night, immediately adjacent to residential uses. And I have a question about that phrase that starts on page two and continues on page three. Buffer around an outdoor restaurant or bar area that are immediately adjacent to residential uses. Now, I can think of many that may meet that definition or possibly not. Is the definition distance? Or is it some kind of a structure between the immediate adjacent nature of the open bar to residential?
Well, I would say that immediately adjacent would be directly next door to. So there's a restaurant with outdoor seating with residential right next door, which quite frankly is unusual. You're going to see that more probably downtown, where there may be residential uses right next to a restaurant, for example. So, but again, you know, we have it, Chapter 18 Code ordinances, which is our sound ordinance that regulates some of those compatibility concerns through noise. So this was more of a physical barrier that we had in mind.
Could we review that, that, how that regulation would take place?
You mean for?
With the sound ordinance?
Right, so it's regulated by the police department. It's not regulated through our department. So again, they respond to complaints of extra noise.
And what is, I can't remember the words exactly, but it's some distance from, from the noise generation, and it's whether or not you and I can have a conversation five feet apart, is that the noise restriction you're talking about?
Yeah, you should be able to talk to each other three feet apart without yelling. There's a certain decibel level too that's set by the code, and I think some of our officers even have those meters to check that. But it is.
There's a decibel level in the code?
I believe there might be, yeah. But the standard is a distance requirement where you can have a conversation without yelling. I didn't do it.
The whole purpose of this language and the new noise as opposed to the old noise restrictions that are in the code was that there was no decibel level because there was a decibel, decimeter calibration issue, and then, yeah, a legal, there was a legal issue, yes. So I don't believe there was, Mr. Wobblit, you know?
I'm just looking through the code right now. It does reference decibels, I'm looking to see if there's a specific limitation. I remembered that also.
What do you remember?
That they, I thought that they also removed that, or didn't have that in there because of the calibration issues and depending where you're standing, and there was issues with that.
The azimuth of the microphone on the decimeter meter, all of that. So now we're down to a subjective, I guess it's always subjective, but we're down to a subjective noise analysis by the police when they get there. Are they able to you and I out, 50 feet, come through if you would?
I hope not, you can go and test it if you, if you're bored by it.
There does appear to be a table that shows decibel levels. I'm assuming this is the most recent version of the code, the same old code?
It's the same.
Do you keep going down? Yeah. Well, that's good, I've never seen, I've never noticed. This has a revision date of 2018, I don't know if that's specific.
Yeah, but to my knowledge, that's the most recent one, yes.
Are there any references in the code to what those decibel levels relate to?
Yeah, if you scroll down, there's a secondary table that gives. There should be a table too, it shows up on mine that has trucks and buses, passenger cars as examples.
Because when you're talking airport noise, 65 decibels is recommended. No residential in that noise country. Which means it's significant.
Right, it's the tax.
Yeah, the Sheldon curve, I don't know if you're familiar with the Sheldon curve, but that's, that's where those decisions come from. Examples in the code where people are raising their hands and say, saying, "We're irritated by the sound 65 decibel line west country." Well, I learned something, I shouldn't have looked it up. I didn't think that were numbers. It's good, thank you. So adjacent means?
I would interpret that to be literally immediately adjacent. They are sharing a property boundary, for example, or right next door to each other. Which is the way that the other parts of the Land Development Code read in regards to compatibility buffers. It's properties that are right next door to each other.
Okay, so it's not a distance, it's just some structure in between the residents and the noise.
Right, it's a kind of fence or wall or structure.
Okay, thank you. And could, could we give description of a 4COP SRX license? I'm not sure what that is.
Sure, yeah, 4COP SRX license is the state's license where you are a full restaurant, but also serve full liquor, so beer, wine, and spirits.
So 4COP means spirits?
Yes, it, it can, 4COP special restaurant. You have to be a restaurant, you have to have 150 seats, and you have to serve at least 51% of your revenues from food and non-alcoholic beverages. And really, this, this really started this summer with some concerns of trying to provide more safe environments for people to dine in response to some COVID restrictions and the desire to increase the allowable outdoor seating that restaurants can have, but then also increase their ability to get a 4COP. So again, we don't know how many restaurants would be even eligible if they added their outdoor seating to their seat count to be able to go from a 2COP, which is just beer and wine, to a 4COP. There could just be a handful. It could encourage, you know, different restaurants to come to our downtown, for example. But that's kind of really what started all this. Our code specifically precludes restaurants from counting their outdoor seating towards their 150 required seats for a 4COP special restaurant license. So again, this was council's desire to try to see that change to allow a little bit more flexibility for some of our restaurants.
And how does that reflect, Ms. Aron, back on page two, about the council's concerns with RINOs, parking compatibility?
So the RINOs concern, they're concerned with, well, if you don't know, restaurants in name only, we had a few several years ago, that, you know, when it got later, they'd move all their tables and chairs, like you mentioned, and they'd kind of turn from a restaurant to a club. The police department has done a fantastic job mitigating that by requiring those restaurants to give up site plans of their interior table and chair layout. And that way they can check, say, oh, your tables and chairs are where they're supposed to be, which is actually regulated by a separate section of the code. Looking for it here. So Section 4 of the, it's not in the Land Development Code, but it's in our Code of Ordinances, requires 4COP special restaurant establishments to keep their tables and chairs upright and in place during all hours of operation, as submitted by diagrams. So those are those diagrams that are collected by the police department to say.
Top of page two.
Yeah, top of page two. It's actually under that first bullet that continues on. So that, that concern came up in the briefings, but again, it's already addressed in a separate part of the city's code ordinances.
So essentially, that paragraph says they can't move the chairs?
Correct.
And was there discussion, thank you, Ms. Aron, was there discussion about how this extra seating's going to impact parking in the areas near the qualifying restaurants?
Sure, yeah, of course, parking is always an issue out here, as you know. So any restaurant, for example, that wants to expand their outdoor seating, they will have to provide parking for that. With the exception of what we're proposing, and this is, goes back to something that was discussed, some of you might remember, in 2017, to provide a very small amount of outdoor seating to establishments that don't serve alcohol, where they wouldn't have to come get conditional use approval, and they wouldn't have to provide parking. So kind of the magic number we fell on was 250 square feet, which is the equivalent of one parking space.
That's the ice cream shop.
Under shopping centers, right. So for the small ice cream shops, coffee shops, they just want to put a couple of tables and chairs outside, making it a little bit easier and faster for them to do that. Again, everybody wants more outdoor seating now because they want to provide safer dining options. They're still, you know, trying to do that. So council expressed interest in revisiting that. If I recall, it was supported by the Planning Commission with the caveat that we're going to have a little bit of outdoor seating that doesn't have to come before the Planning Commission, that it be at establishments that don't serve alcohol. It did not pass when it got to council, it was a 3-3 vote in 2017. So wanted to revisit that as part of this, they seemed interested in doing that. So that's why that's kind of packaged in here, I guess.
Can you say that one more time, what the concern was? That they would have it by right, not by request?
Right, so the concern of Planning Commission when we first brought this forward for that kind of free 250 square feet of outdoor seating, if you will, without having to request conditional use approval, was alcohol, which is always, you know, a concern. So the Planning Commission's recommendation at the time was, we support it, but if there's no alcohol in that kind of free seating. Because it would just be at a staff level review at that point.
So this memorializes that?
This, this, yeah, this has just really taken that back through the process, since it didn't pass through City Council in 2017, I believe it was.
So was there any discussion about the arrival of alcoholic drinks at the seating area at the ice cream restaurant that we were talking about that was reported by the neighbors? In fact, somebody from the Planning Commission or Planning Department talked to me about that the other day, partying, partying late into the evening.
Not aware of that incident.
Although approved by motion last meeting.
There was concern that people had alcohol there?
Yeah, where they bring it on.
Oh, I'm not aware of that, that's sort of not limited.
And by the way, everybody asked us to order the boombox, now there's music too.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that. But again, those type of issues would be handled by either police department or code enforcement, depending on what the actual issue is.
I fully support this, because I think it'll make it a lot easier for those small mom and pop shops that are really just trying to drive business. I think bringing down some of those hurdles can't hurt, especially with, you know, they don't serve alcohol. Probably not, they're too crazy to do. Are there any hour restrictions or anything like that on these kinds of restaurants?
No, not that I know of. I don't think most of our rules passed out of town.
Yeah, I would thought.
Thanks for the coffee.
So I was gonna, I was gonna echo that. I'm certainly in favor of adding outdoor seating. The only, and I know this is just a recommendation to councils who are making their decision there, but the piece that I'm a little uncomfortable with is that we're increasing outdoor space by 25% more. And then we're now increasing the ability for some restaurants to get liquor license. So I would recommend, I would make a recommendation to council to figure out what restaurants are going to potentially get a liquor license now and have outdoor seating, and what areas those are in. Because that's, you know, we're now going to have restaurants now having, now serving liquor in areas that are now going to be bigger in outdoor seating. So I guess that's the only concern I have, but I certainly am in favor of more outdoor seating in living Florida, so.
I would agree with that, but the difference between the situation that you just described and the situation you have now is there's individual review of each situation by the Planning Commission. Whereas if we support this change to the code and the council votes it in, then it's, it's a right by direction citywide approval. And there's planning, parking, and noise issues there. And we've all discussed them tonight, that right there in front of us. And I don't quite understand why the Planning Commission wants to cede that authority completely. I mean, they have it already, but I don't want them to support it. Because when you have individual review, now you conduct the individual circumstances. Whereas when it's a citywide right, it's a citywide right.
But this would not take away the requirement for a restaurant to come in and get conditional use approval for their outdoor seating. Again, as proposed, with the exception of the small ice cream shop that just wants to, that doesn't serve alcohol, that wants to put some tables and chairs outside. Anybody that needs outdoor seating would still have to come before the Planning Commission, new restaurants. And, you know, some of them, as you know, go into parking areas, sometimes that might require a parking variance. So every situation is really unique. And if a restaurant wanted to increase from a 2COP beer and wine to a 4COP doing with spirits as well, that goes through zoning reviewing through our department. So they don't just automatically get it for this date. It comes, and we verify that they actually have the seating requirements necessary.
So the existing permits go from 25 to 15 just automatically?
Not necessarily, no, they wouldn't.
They would not?
They would not necessarily.
They'd have to come before the Planning Commission?
I would say that they would need to come before the Planning Commission to expand their outdoor seating. Honestly, most of the existing restaurants will have a hard time finding a place to put more outdoor seating that isn't in a parking lot. That's necessary, you could park it requirements of the restaurant, so.
Right, and that's where we're going on South Beaches? All of those are going to department areas? The new ones in, in the?
There are several, yeah.
Yeah, there's four of them.
But you'll, you'll see them all up and down Third Street in different areas that have put their outdoor seating into a, into a parking lot. And most of them have maxed out their ability to do that. So if they wanted to take over more parking spaces, they'd have to go before the Board of Adjustment to do a parking variance. So there's a lot of moving parts to this.
Well, I didn't see any discussion of that, of that fact that you just stated that it would come through the Planning Commission if they wanted to expand. I don't see any, is that in there, Mr. Wobblit?
Not that I know of, Heather was actually the drafter.
I did not put that in here, no.
Okay, so if, I would just remind the commission that if we go through this and we want to have some supervision over where and how this works, we might want to make an amendment.
So it would still remain a conditional approval, is what you're saying before us?
Right, outdoor seating will still remain a conditional use in zoning districts, and in some zoning districts, just having a restaurant at all requires conditional use approval in addition to the outdoor seating. So that would still come before you guys. That, that hasn't changed, again, with the exception of the 250 without alcohol.
Well, I don't see that's clear from his language, but I understand what he just said. I think that's the way we should be doing business. Because our job here is to balance the compatibility of competing uses.
For outdoor seating, is there a definition for that? Like rooftop, I don't know if it's outdoors, is that considered outdoor seating?
Uh, there is, make it say. There's a definition for.
No, there is?
Yeah, hang on. So it's, it's combined with outdoor, it says outdoor restaurant or bar. Means any restaurant or bar, or portion thereof which exists outside the permanent exterior walls of the principal building.
So rooftop is outside the exterior?
Yeah, rooftop would count, patios, anything that's not enclosed fully, like roof and walls, yeah.
Okay, cool.
I guess rooftop would, and it actually says that definition includes any deck or other area constructed and/or utilized on the rooftop. and/or utilized on the rooftop of the structure. I don't have that many, but there's a couple.
There's going to be more.
There might be.
To, sorry, to Justin's point, I mean, I like that because, I mean, there's an establishment on Beach Boulevard with a rooftop bar, and I would venture to say that's over twenty-five percent of the gross.
We don't know, they haven't established that yet, but whoever, whatever tenant goes in that space will need to come in and get conditional use approval.
So as it reads, they wouldn't be able to use that unless this is approved?
No, they would, they would be able to request conditional use approval for the use of the roof. As it stands now, the equivalent of twenty-five percent of their downstairs space. If this goes through, then it would be fifty percent.
But if it's larger than twenty-five percent, they can't, that's as much as they can get?
As it stands now, right, if this were to go through, it would be fifty percent. But again, remember, they have to provide parking for that increase in square footage of the restaurant.
Can you restate the concern that you have about this?
Me?
No, I'm here.
My concern is that as the ordinance reads, as I read it, it's a, it's a citywide authorization for those four COPs to go from twenty-five to fifty percent outdoor, as long as they can arrange parking and meet the noise standard, but that has nothing to do with them moving from twenty-five percent to fifty percent. And if there's no restriction, I still don't understand where the restriction is that says it has to come for conditional use.
Well, it would be for all restaurants. This would apply to every restaurant that would be eligible for outdoor seating. Whether it's that they have two COP or four COP for nothing, you know, if a restaurant wanted their fifty percent outdoor seating, they would still have to come before you guys. So if it, I mean, you could propose a condition that, you know, solidifies that expansions of existing outdoor seating would require review by the planning commission or something to that effect.
Well, that's, that's exactly my question, not kind of, that's right on.
I hear you.
Is it, is it a given or is it a given if it counts for conditional use approval or is it not? And I don't know where that says that in this, in this change, supplemental statement change.
Yeah, we didn't specify that, but if you wanted to make that a condition or a recommendation from the planning commission and staff to add something along those lines, you could.
I mean, isn't it defined somewhere else in the code that all outdoor seating is to be come before us anyways?
Yeah, it's under conditional use as a use in all of our zoning districts where it's allowed.
Right.
I think what your concern is, Mr. Dahl, is someone's going from the twenty-five to the fifty. It's a pretty, you know, pretty significant jump in some cases. Especially, like you said, if it's going to result in them going from a two COP to a four COP special restaurant, is that accurate? But that's what your concern is?
Yeah, I'm just, yes, I don't care where the oversight happens, but compatibility looks different to somebody that's trying to go from twenty-five to fifty percent for economic purposes and somebody that lives in a store that's trying to go to sleep at ten o'clock.
Sorry to blare this, but, you know, there's a fine establishment in Neptune Beach area, I guess Jax Beach, but border in Neptune Beach, and they have outdoor seating. If they grow it to, from their twenty-five percent now to fifty percent, they've already been approved for outdoor seating, do they need to come before us then to get the additional twenty-five percent effect?
I would say, I would say yes, they would, but that's what I'm saying, if you wanted to clarify that and go, that increases.
I think we should have clarified that, just add it in there.
I think that'd be wise because that's kind of our function here is to help ensure we're buffering compatibility section and this isn't our decision anyways, sir recommendation.
Yep.
Correct, yes, it would go forward as a recommendation to amendment to this when it goes to council.
Pretty much it only applies to upgrades to your upgrade, right?
Right, already knew, I mean, a restaurant that doesn't have it, that wants new outdoor seating they didn't have before would still come before you guys, again, if, as it reads now, with the exception of that small amount of outdoor seating for establishments that don't serve alcohol. That would be the exception.
Perfect, yeah.
Any other discussion? Motion.
Do we need to come up with the words?
No.
Okay.
No, we'll do that.
Thank you.
If you guys want to give us the concept and then Christian and I will make it make sense.
I think you got the concept, you guys have it?
We got it.
So, yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the recommendations with the addition of what we've talked about.
And the addition is?
The addition would be the twenty-five to fifty percent capacity and they'd have to still have to come back to us if they're upgraded.
I got it.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion second, rule call please.
Margot Maury?
Yes.
Brittany Sanders?
Yes.
Justin Lerman?
Yes.
David Dahl?
Yes.
Okay, that closes the public hearing, will it?
I go.
Where do we go?
Just from the planning department report, the chair isn't here, but he had brought up the possibility of canceling the December twenty-eighth meeting, which is between Christmas and New Year's, if you guys want to take a formal action to do that. We haven't scheduled anything for that yet.
Motion? Motion to cancel December twenty-eighth, planning commission being affected. We have a motion second, school call?
Brittany Sanders?
Yes.
Margot Maury?
Yes.
Justin Lerman?
Yes.
David Dahl?
Yes.
Ask if there was any, if there was any application for anything?
No, we don't have any pending, we're perfect.
Yeah. All right, good, okay.
So now it's on us to.